... in progress.
Counsel, quiet all the sudden. Well, good evening and welcome to the Federal Way City Council Meeting for January sixteenth of two thousand and twenty-four. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening. It's great to see everybody here. We've got a busy agenda this evening, and so we'll get right into it. First, we have the swearing-in ceremony of new police officers, and we'll have Chief Wong come on up and start the introduction.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Council President Kochmar, council members. It is my pleasure to introduce the newest members of the Federal Way Police Department to you and our residents. Mayor Farrell will administer the oath of office this evening. The four officers standing before you are entry-level police officers who recently graduated from the police academy are currently in our field training program. These officers are quality individuals and people of integrity, and we're fortunate to have them as part of our team and serving our community. First officer I'll introduce to you is Officer Kyra Weber. Prior to joining City of Federal Way, Kyra worked as a supervisor for Starbucks. Kyra started with the city on June twentieth last year and graduated from the police academy on November twenty-ninth. Kyra was born in Tappanish, Washington, and grew up in Yakima. Kyra earned her associate degree from Yakima Community College. Kyra enjoys running, riding motorcycles, and riding longboard skateboards in her spare time. Next, we have Officer Noah Franquez. Before joining the City of Federal Way, Noah was a corrections deputy for the Thurston County Sheriff's Office and served in eleven B Infantry in the United States Army. Noah currently serves as an infantryman in the Army National Guard Reserve. Noah started with the city on July third and graduated from the police academy on November twenty-ninth. Noah enjoys hiking, spending time with her family in her spare time, in his spare time. All right, next we have Officer Jacob Start. Before joining the City of Federal Way, Jacob worked as a corrections deputy with the Thurston County Sheriff's Office. Jacob started with the city on July third and graduated from the police academy on November twenty-ninth last year. Jacob was born in Puyallup and lives in Tacoma with his wife. In his spare time, Jacob plays and coaches lacrosse. Next, we have Officer Noah Miller. Noah was born in Virginia and currently lives in Auburn. Noah earned a Bachelor's of Arts in Criminal Justice from the University of Washington in two thousand and twenty-one. Noah began employment with the City of Federal Way on July third last year and graduated from the police academy on November twenty-ninth. Noah enjoys working out in the gym and playing golf in his spare time. Please join me in welcoming the newest members of the Federal Way Police Department. Officers, if I could have you come to the mic up front, and I've been asked to have you get fairly close, maybe about a foot or so from the mic, spread out, four across.
Good evening. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. Please state your name.
Aye, Noah Ferrer.
Do solemnly swear that I'm a citizen of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I'm a citizen of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
And that I will support the Constitution.
And that I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the laws of the state of Washington.
And the laws of the state of Washington.
And will do the, to the best of my judgment.
To the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly and faithfully.
Truly and faithfully.
Diligently and impartially.
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of police officer.
Perform the duties of police officer.
In and for the City of Federal Way.
In and for the City of Federal Way.
County of King, Washington.
County of King, Washington.
As duty, as such duties prescribed by law.
As such duties prescribed by law.
Well, congratulations.
If you can give me a minute, sir. Okay. Commander Klingel, front and center. We would like to now publicly recognize and celebrate the promotion of Lieutenant Brian Klingel to the rank of commander. Lieutenant Brian Klingel has over twenty-nine years of law enforcement experience and is a founding member of our agency, joining our agency as a lateral experienced police officer. As a startup agency, Brian was one of the first officers hired. He worked as a patrol officer on the first day we took over police services in October of nineteen ninety-six. As an officer in Federal Way, Brian worked as a patrol officer, a field training officer, and a drug recognition expert for eleven years. Brian was appointed to the position of corporal in two thousand and fifteen. As a narcotics detective, Brian led and conducted numerous investigations into drug trafficking rings and drug-related crimes. As a lieutenant, Brian worked as a patrol lieutenant, special investigations, and special operations lieutenant for five years, with an extensive experience commanding critical incidents and leading complex investigations. Lieutenant Klingel delivers excellent customer service to the public, engages with the community to identify and solve issues, and maintains collaborative working relationship with our external stakeholders, including our city staff, business leaders, and law enforcement agencies. Lieutenant Klingel grew up in Federal Way, attended Lake Grove Elementary, Lakota Middle School, and graduated from Decatur High School. Lieutenant Klingel has a Bachelor's Degree in Criminal Justice from Washington State University. Before becoming a police officer, Lieutenant Klingel served in the United States Army as a combat medic, was awarded the Armed Forces Expeditionary Medal. We're excited for Brian. Lieutenant Klingel embodies our agency's core values and deserves this recognition, has earned this promotion. I am pleased to promote him to the rank of commander. Please join me in congratulating Commander Klingel for this significant career achievement in his law enforcement career.
All right. Commander, let's make this official. Please raise your right hand. Aye. State your name.
Aye, Brian Klingel.
Do solemnly swear that I'm a citizen of the United States.
Do solemnly swear I'm a citizen of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
And that I will support the Constitution.
And I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the state of Washington.
And the laws of the state of Washington.
And will to the best of my judgment.
And will to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly and faithfully.
Truly and faithfully.
Diligently and impartially.
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of police commander.
Perform the duties of police commander.
In and for the City of Federal Way.
In and for the City of Federal Way.
County of King, state of Washington.
County of King, state of Washington.
And duties as prescribed by law.
And duties prescribed by law.
All right. Congratulations, Commander. All right. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, man.
All right.
Chief, let's get a picture.
Hold on. Hold on. Come on back. The mayor and council would like to get a photo. Brian, what do you think? Should we all come down, or should we have them? All right. Thank you, Council President. We will stand up. All right. Congratulations. Oh, great. Thank you. Okay. And yes, Commander, go Gators. I heard that. As the father of a current Gator, I'm, it's great to see you, and alumnus.
I know you've been.
Exactly. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, now, we are on to our next item, which is the promotion, let's see, excuse me. We have the report on the Martin Luther King Junior Student Essay and Art Contest Awards. Ron Walker, MLK Committee Member, Diversity Commissioner, will present to Gabriel Cruz. Ron, great to see you.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, Council President Kochmar, City Council, I'm here to present an award. Every year, the Martin Luther King Day Celebration has an award, not only one award, but several awards for essay contests, and this year, our award winner is Gabriel Cruz. And so I just want to present his certificate. Gabriel, if you come this way. Come on up. Let me read this certificate. It says, "Certificate of Award Presented to Gabriel Cruz on behalf of the City of Federal Way's Mayor and Diversity Commission. A recognition of your outstanding essay submission for winning the two thousand and twenty-four Dr. Martin Luther King Celebration Student Art and Essay Contest."
There you go.
So, Ron, could he, could he read his essay? Is it very long?
Did you bring your essay? That's okay. It was, it was long, so, you know. Yes. So, yes, we did, uh, we-
You could send us a copy. We'd love to see it.
I'll send you a copy. We, we ran the contest. We, we worked really hard this year for trying to put on a great celebration for the city, and we heard a lot of positive feedback. So it was, it was really, really nice. One piece of comment is, as you know, at the end, we always like to community flame, but the community flame that you saw there was one that I cobbled together in my kitchen from some things I got at, at Home Goods. So, because the original one is actually lost someplace here in the city, which we need to find. So I would just advocate, if you could assign some specific person to run around in closets and storage units and see if we could find it, I know it's someplace here somewhere. So, that's about it. So.
Well, thank you, Ron. And I want to say, yeah, great job on the event yesterday. It was really, it was actually so well-run. I know that, you know, we've got the, you and the Diversity Commission members to thank for that, and also our important staff member, staff members that helped with that. So, thank you.
It was a team effort. It was a very much team effort, and shout out to Trinise Rogers and Lisa Wallace, and especially to Levi Luft and Sarah Bridgford. They, they were invaluable in making this happen. So it was definitely a team effort.
So could you also set, have Mr. Cruz's essay sent to the mayor? Maybe they might publish it?
Okay. We'll do that. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Hunda?
So the community flame was here at City Hall in the corner down the hallway in two thousand and fourteen, and then it, it left because there was concern that it wasn't protected, because it needs to be in a glass case to be protected.
Yeah.
So it's somewhere here.
Okay.
And if we could find it and get a glass case and display it either at City Hall or the PAC or someplace.
All right. I was looking at John Hutton, our Parks Director, and he handles facilities as well, so we'll, we'll get on that. All right. And now some very important piece of business. Counselor Hunda, you want to join me at the podium, and let me brag on you a bit. Come on down. All right. Well, the, the next piece of business we have is, Councilmember Susan Hunda has served so well in, in leadership roles over the past six years, and what we wanted to do is take a moment and say thank you so much. And so when we, we've changed the roles somewhat in the council, back in two thousand and eighteen, when, when she first started as Deputy Mayor, that was essentially the equivalent of where Council President, what Council President is now. And Councilmember Hunda served in, from two thousand and eighteen and nineteen as Deputy Mayor, and then at a council retreat, we changed that role, we changed the structure to Council President and then, and then another Deputy Mayor. So Susan Hunda served as Council President from, or excuse me, Deputy Mayor from two thousand and eighteen and nineteen, then Council President from two thousand and twenty and twenty-one, and two thousand, and then Deputy Mayor again from two thousand and twenty-two to twenty-three. And while those are some dates all rolled out, what they really actually represent is countless, countless hours of effort and planning and coordination. And this community, our, our council and the city government owes Susan Hunda a debt of gratitude for all of the extra work and dedication and partnership. And so on behalf of a grateful city, I wanted to say thank you so much.
Thank you.
Should we get a picture first?
Thank you, Mayor. So when I became Deputy Mayor, there were a couple of things I wanted to change, because I wanted council to be more noticeable to the people. You know, it was, we sat up there and oftentimes didn't say anything because meetings are so structured. And one of the things we did very shortly was to have a space in the beginning of the agenda for council committee reports, because council committees is where most of the work that council does happens at council committees, but we didn't have a chance to talk about that. And so now that's talked about at every meeting and early in the meeting, so that those of you who are here get to hear about what happens in the council committees, which is really cool. And we became a member of National League of Cities during COVID, which was also super cool, because COVID was a really rough time, and National League of Cities not only helped council, but they also helped staff, which, and we all needed all the help we could get to keep cities going during COVID. But one of the things that I really enjoyed was our civic, we called council videos civic council videos, and during COVID, in two thousand and twenty, when we were not here at City Hall, council, everything was remote. We weren't coming into City Hall at all. Council got together and made civic videos, and every council member chose a different theme, like President Kochmar chose the history of Federal Way, Councilmember Suffolk Dawson chose the census. We had just gone through the census, and she talked about the census. I talked about what council is, what we do, how we do it. Some council members talked about voting. Some council members talked about the committees that they served on, and it was really cool. I was watching those today, and it was just a way to, to remind the public that council still was important. They were still working behind the scenes, even though you didn't see us every other Tuesday. And anyway, you can go online, on YouTube, and find those. They were pretty cool to watch. Oh, and Councilmember Tran, I can't remember what you talked about. Do you remember?
Sure.
All right. Well, I will, I will remember soon, and I will remind you. But those are pretty cool. Anyway, thank you very much.
So thank you. And Susan's going to be our new regional affairs coordinator, so she's going to be reporting to you on many of the things that are going on in our region. Very important. Thank you.
And the National League of Cities involvement was something that Susan was really passionate about, and we're going again this year, and I think many of us are going, and-
All of us.
Yeah, that's, I think, each, each all, each one of us. And that's really important, where you can get out there and, and meet our federal lobbyists and lobbyists and legislators. A little tongue-tied tonight. All right, let's, we got it all up. Okay, Bill, before we get going on the slideshow and, and the, my emerging issues and report, I wanted to say a big, big thank you to Fusion. As we know, we, we have all been in a very cold snap, and every one of us that sits in this room and that is watching on TV knows that we have, in some ways, experienced record cold. We have driven around this community or been in our homes and seen the unbelievable numbers of nineteen degrees, eighteen degrees, and even lower. And there are the unsheltered in our community. I want to say a very special thank you to the folks at Fusion who brought in those individuals, dozens of individuals. In fact, even last night, they extended it one more night. We went from Thursday, and this is Fusion at their location on Pacific Highway, right near the, the post office. And Council, you would be, I know that you were receiving updates about the, the count, and word has gotten out about that. I think last night, we almost had three dozen individuals, and they were fed and provided shelter. Thank you, Councilmember McDaniel, for the follow-up questions about some of the details on that. And I, I want to let you know that Fusion has been a great partner, and they're literally in our, in our community, saving lives. I want to say a special thanks to Sarah Bridgford and our, our staff members and human services to, that made the calls and coordination. Special thanks to John Hutton that helped make sure that the community center was open as a, as a warming center during the day, and to our very generous community. And we talk about a lot, the food bank a lot during the holidays, but it's cold, and, and we've got individuals that have needs all throughout the year. And the multi-service center and the food bank on the east side is, is very important as well, and, and we want to make sure that we're doing everything. Overcomer Church, I think, is involved as well. I met with representatives from them last week as well. So I, that's the first thing I wanted to say. Now, additionally, before we get into the report, we watch the weather very carefully. The weather and the conditions of our, of our roads, really, you know, it makes sure that people can come and go from their homes to their jobs, to schools. EJ, you had passed me, and, and thank you very much for, you'd come to, by the office. Would you give a brief summary of what we're looking at as we go into the next couple of days, tonight and the next couple of days, as we know right now?
Sure. So tonight, there's a, we're watching the roads that we are supposed to get freezing rain tonight. I don't think that's me. Starting some point between six and eight o'clock tonight, continuing through midnight, and then we're supposed to start seeing warming. So the rest of the week, it's supposed to be pretty wet, but the, the risk that we're seeing right now is basically tonight through midnight with roads icing up. So that is, we, we are starting to see, I'm actually looking at the weather in the cameras right now while I'm sitting here, but we're starting to see a little bit of rain throughout the city right now, and it's supposed to start as that, which means unfortunately, it'll rinse a lot of the brine off the road that we've been using over the cold weather the last couple of days. And then the temp's supposed to drop a little bit, so we are expecting some icing on the roads. Staff's ready and prepared to go out and address it as soon as it is, but with the rain coming in, in front of it, it's a little bit of a reactive response, as opposed to what we like to do, which is get out in front of it.
All right. So that means when you get out to your, you know, get out on your driveway and out in your streets tomorrow, proceed cautiously as you go home tonight, and especially when you, when you venture out tomorrow, be somewhat, be very careful and mindful. Last year, we had this ice event, and we had cameras in the front of our house, and I was not mindful. And I went out to the, to the vehicle first thing in the morning, and I did not realize there was a sheet of ice. And, and I walked out to the vehicle, and literally my coffee and everything just went, you know, flying over, and, and my wife and my son watched that video over and over and over, especially as I had to crawl to get my coffee. They thought it was hysterical, so they remind me about that pretty regularly. So while it's funny on one level, we want to make sure that everybody's taking care of themselves. All right. All right. So now, let's get into the mayor's emerging issues and report. First one is, I want to say a special thank you to Melissa Hamilton. Melissa, thank you very much for opening up your home, and that's the inside of her home right there with many of her neighbors. And we had a great community discussion over by Steel Lake about public safety and about the state of the city, all kinds of issues as it relates to the lake and the neighborhoods and, and our community. And we had our block watch folks there. Tiffany is there in the far left, and she's with our police department with regard to community outreach and block watch. And we got some great questions, and the chief was there. Thank you, chief, and, and David and Bill from my office. And it's great to see that many people get together and, and talk about the issues and ask the questions. Okay, next. Then, this past Saturday, we had the seventeenth anniversary of the Korean American Day Celebration, and it really, it celebrates the, over one hundred and seventeen years, I believe, of anniversary of the first immigrants to the United States that worked in, I think it's the one hundred and fifth anniversary. It was, it was-
Nineteenth twenty.
Hundred and twentieth. Thank you, Sandra. And so we were there at the, the High Line Performing Arts Center on January thirteenth. There, you could see in the picture, we've got other regional mayors, and also we, in the picture, you could see Commissioner, Lake Haven Commissioner Len England and Councilmember Susan Hunda and myself, and there were leaders there from all over, and it was a great event, a great cultural event. Okay. Then, we had just yesterday, those are the, some of the pictures from the MLK Day Celebration at the Performing Arts and Events Center, and it was absolutely fantastic. And with the performers and the words, you know, Ron has been doing this for years and years, well, actually, our community has. I remember when we, we were talking about Decatur High School, I'm sure many of us remember when that celebration for MLK was held at Decatur High School for years, and then it migrated, it went over to the Baptist Church for a year. I think that was two thousand and twelve, on three-twentieth, and then for the past few years, it's been at the Performing Arts and Events Center, and it was just a great community moment. So thank you for all of those individuals and that participated. Okay, then, last night, we had the Dream Showcase presented by the Federal Way Basketball Program. This was numerous teams from all over the region, boys and girls, girls' teams from all over the, the region. And you've got our King County Councilman Pete Von Reichbauer, the owner of All City Fence, Rick Cook, one of the coaches there who coaches at Federal Way High School for the track team, and myself as well. And so it was, it was great to see high school athletes perform and, and compete and do their best on a very special day. All right, next. Tomorrow, I leave for Washington, DC. Really, for the first time, I've engaged and been involved in the United States Conference of Mayors, and this is the ninety-second, ninety-second winter meeting in Washington, DC, from July, excuse me, January, I wish it was July, January seventeenth through the nineteenth. And on Friday, we, I'm told that we may be at the White House, where the president will be attending. So that should be an interesting opportunity to meet mayors and talk with mayors, not just here regionally, but from around the nation. Let's see, and I'll, I'll report back when we come back. All right, next. We have the City Council Retreat at Dumas Bay, Saturday, February third. Meeting begins at eight AM. Doors will open about seven-thirty. I'd get there, you know, there's a free breakfast for everybody, and, and yes, Susan, there will be bacon. I, I made sure, and I think we collectively made sure. Yes, that's right. Thank you.
It's not a retreat without bacon.
That's right. Exactly. And then we're going to get to work, and it'd be great for those, this is really an opportunity for us to really talk about our vision for the future and the direction we're moving. All right. And then, we've got upcoming events. We've got the next session of the free financial literacy classes, beginning Wednesday, January twenty-fourth through March twentieth, six-thirty PM to eight-thirty PM, weekly, at the community center. And there's the flyer right there, and it, coming in March, it's Your Relationship with Money, a free six-week course in cooperation with WSECU, facilitated by Minda Michelle Maddox, and that'll be March seventh through April eleventh. All right. And then, at the PAC, February fifteenth, Thursday, is my state of the city address, our state of the city address. I'll be delivering it there, and we're going to have a great event and great opportunity to talk about where we're at and where we're going. So I hope you can attend. And free to the public, and there'll be all, there'll be booths. We'll have not only booths for city departments, but other local governments and many nonprofits. So it's a great opportunity for all of us to get together and, and talk about the things important to our community. Okay, now, it's time for the most important part of the meeting, which is to hear from you. Everyone has three minutes unless they have designated that they're speaking on behalf of five people that are present. And we don't need to, we do not need to know your address, but please let us know the community reside in. And also, green means go, yellow means you've got about thirty seconds, red means please stop. And, you know, we've got guidelines in regard to appropriate comments and what's not appropriate, so I think we all know. With that, why don't we go ahead and get started? And is Matthew Johnson here? Matthew Johnson? address. I'll, I'll be delivering it there, and we're going to have, um, a great event and great opportunity to talk about, uh, where we're at and where we're going. Um, so I hope you can attend. Um, and, uh, free to the public, and there'll be all, there'll be booths. Um, we'll have not only booths for city departments, uh, but other local governments and many nonprofits. So it's a great opportunity, uh, for all of us to get together and, uh, and talk about the things important to our community. Okay, um, uh, now, it's time for the most important part of the meeting, which is to hear from you. Um, everyone has three minutes unless they have designated that they're speaking on behalf of five people that are present. Um, and, uh, we don't need to, we do not need to know your address, but please let us know the community reside in. And, uh, also, uh, green means go, yellow means you've got about 30 seconds, red means please stop. Um, and, uh, you know, we've got guidelines in regard to, um, appropriate, uh, comments and what's not appropriate, so I think we all know. Uh, with that, why don't we go ahead and get started? And, uh, is Matthew Johnson here? Matthew Johnson? Okay, if he shows up, uh, let me know, and, uh, we'll call him back. Uh, Ronald Swift.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Mayor, Council. Thank you for letting me talk. I'm not a public speaker, as you can probably tell. I'm nervous, but, uh, what I'd like to talk about is on the, the ICE on Federal Way. You have one person driving around and filing, uh, violations after violations, and they don't even live around, around our areas. Uh, I've had an RV in my, my driveway since, since, uh, since 98, and not one of the, not one of our cul-de-sac people has ever complained. And, and it's, it's contained in my driveway, but it, since it's over 22 feet, they say that I, I can't keep it there. And this is from somebody that is just driving around and filing is, we need, I think we need to update the rules on, on exactly who can complain about it. I mean, the way, the way Google Earth and everything is now, we could sit, we could sit in, in California and file complaints through, and do it from there. And that's just one of the things. There, there was, uh, there was seven people in, uh, my neighborhood down at, around the Twin Lakes, uh, that has got hit with this same thing. And we've never, ever had a complaint about, about this, this storage, uh, storing our, our RVs at our homes, because mine's a 2021. It's a real nice fifth wheel. I want to keep it where I can, I can keep an eye on it. And I just, I just think some of the rules need to be looked at, and how much money is this person wasting on, wasting for Federal Way, because you guys went from 30 violations to over 100 this year. And that's, that's costing, costing the city money to go through and look at all this. And that's why I'm, I just think that, uh, I just wish you would take a look at it, and, uh, because, um, rumor is, I, I can't, I can't say positively, rumor is that this person owns one of the storage units, uh, here in Federal Way. That's what I heard from a story that some other guy was, was telling somebody else about when I was standing behind him. So I mean, I think there's, there's a violation on his part if, if he's being paid to go around or, or he's making money off of the ICE on Federal Way. And that's, that's all I really wanted to say is, I'd like for us to look at it and, and see if there's, uh, any updates that we can, we can correct on it and get the codes up where there's, where they should be, and look who, look who's filing, filing against everybody. Because getting that letter, get that letter in the mail really, it really ticks you off, and I can see where, where neighbors could go against neighbors because of some guy that don't even live in that neighborhood, and that neighbor thinks that, you know, that this other person's doing it. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Jeffrey Tancredi.
So Mayor, is that something you can look at?
Uh, well, um, did he, is he, did he leave the room?
Mr. Swift, here he is.
Well, uh, let me, let me say, actually, Jeffrey, can we hold on just for a second? Uh, let me, uh, um, Mr. Swift, what we'll do is, uh, do we have your email address? Uh, we'll have, um, uh, the director of our, um, uh, uh, community development get back to you on this. I can tell you that, uh, Mr. Swift, just, just so you know, uh, we have gone through a much more robust approach to code enforcement at the city. It used to be a system in which neighbor, it, we required literally neighbor to report on neighbor. I don't think that's appropriate. We're going to a much more proactive system. Um, and, um, I've never heard of, of people reporting things on, on ICE on Federal Way randomly. Um, we have, we average, just this past week, we had 163 complaints on, uh, or concerns about garbage, or whatever it is, uh, a variety of things. We watch the numbers, uh, pretty consistently. Uh, with storm damage in the past week, uh, those numbers jumped up. Uh, but we've got, we're going to a much more proactive system to protect our neighborhoods. So we'll take a look at, at your particular case, but the code is what the code is, and we, you know, if we wanted, if, if you're interested in, in, uh, you having the code looked at for review, let us know, and we'll take a look at that particular section.
Okay, there's going to be quite, quite a few.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, Mr. Tancredi, thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor. Happy New Year. Jeff Tancredi, Federal Way, Federal Way resident for about 27 years. By the way, have a great time in DC. My parents were both born and raised there. Um, we've asked the school board directors, uh, myself and others have asked the school board directors many times to come to council chambers so that the public can watch the, the school board meetings on local TV. We've asked the school board directors, over and over, to move public comment towards the beginning of the meeting. Uh, as it stands, it's, uh, the school board meeting lasts an hour to maybe even an hour and a half, and then they'll have public comment. So it gives the appearance that they're waiting us out in the hopes that we'll just leave. Why do I say that? I've been going to every school board meeting with the exception of two for the last two years. No response, no discussion, no dialogue on these issues. The school board moves the meetings from school to school. It's not a bad idea on its face, but when you combine it with the other issues, uh, again, it gives the appearance that they're trying to confuse the public by going to all these various schools. And again, not, not, not a problem if that was the only issue. Uh, but if it was at the ESE here, it'd be easy access for the public to come. So we've decided to record the meetings and post the meetings on YouTube. Uh, the public has the right to know what's going on in the Federway Public Schools. The Federway Public Schools score well below the state average on the Smarter Balance Assessment. We're way below the state average. Uh, that is the standard for all students in the state, and the appearance that I get is that some of the school board directors are in denial that the SBA is the standard. The at-risk student population scores well below those low scores. Again, we've provided recommendations, suggestions on how to address these low test scores for certain population groups. And these test scores, it's low every year, every year. And I don't see any, any change, and I don't see any movement by the majority on the school board. Education shouldn't be political, but it is. Sorry to have to tell you. It's very political today. We just want good schools, regardless of politics. We just want good schools. Federal Way, they're not good schools. Okay, when you have, our students score well below the state average, well below the state average. So this is very unfortunate, but we'll continue to work with them, to talk to them, to bring these issues up, uh, in the hopes that there'll be some change. Um, so anyway, thanks for taking the comments. Appreciate it.
Great.
Have a good time in DC.
Uh, thank you. All right, Raoul Beard, uh, President of, uh, FWLC, and Barbara Fay, Secretary of Federway Alliance Club.
I, I thank you for this opportunity to come up here, Mayor, and the council members and stuff. It's, uh, first time for me to, uh, be at a meeting like this, uh, and meet these distinguished people that take care of our city. Uh, I'm just here to, uh, tell you that there's a exciting, uh, new, uh, happy event coming up, uh, for, uh, the Federway Lions Club. We are celebrating our 70th year, uh, membership and, uh, of service here in Federal Way. We're one of the longest-running, uh, nonprofit organization in Federal Way. Uh, we're having our, uh, celebration on March 23rd, uh, of this year, uh, at the Golden Spoon. Uh, we're just, uh, wanted to recognize, let everybody know that, uh, you're invited. It's, uh, $20 per person.
For a child.
Uh, for a child, and $40 for adults and stuff. Uh, I'll let Barbara say a few things about us also.
Oh, I just wanted to say that, um, if anybody's interested, you can, um, call me at 425-346-7011, ask for tickets, or you could, um, get in touch with me at my email address, grandmafy1953@gmail.com, and I'll be happy to get your tickets to you.
That's great. Are you in that side room there? Uh, the, the one that's all, all the way to the, the far end?
Yes, that's where it's going to be.
Okay. And what day again?
It's the 23rd of March, which is actua- the actual day of our 70th anniversary.
Wow.
So we were lucky to get the room for that day. So, um, we're hoping that everybody can come and celebrate with us.
Can, can you buy tickets at the door?
Um, I'm not, we haven't gotten that far to decide yet, but we possibly could do that. We're still fi- finalizing all the little things that need to be done.
Okay.
We could, a copy of the-
Uh, Councilmember Honda, and then Councilmember Sephardos.
Um, I have requested a proclamation in March for their, uh, celebration of their 70th anniversary.
Yeah, it's big.
Because they're a great service club, and they should be recognized by the city, so.
Is, uh, is that a diamond? Um, what is that, uh, for anniversary?
Oh, diamonds could be for anything.
[laughing] No, what is that? They, I think 70 years is diamond, isn't it?
I'm not sure.
All right, all right. Well, we'll, no? Maybe it's 50. Okay. All right, well, we'll do something very special. Uh, I'll be there.
Right.
And I know many of our, our councilmembers will be there.
If you could, um, find somebody to do an event invitation for you on Facebook so people can sign up online, that might be real helpful for you to get people there.
Yeah, we could probably put something like that up on our Facebook page.
We'll put it up on ours as well.
Eventbrite is what you need, yeah.
Eventbrite?
Yeah, and it, Mr. McDan- uh, Councilmember McDaniel can help you with that.
Yeah?
Okay.
And then, actually, uh, David Solano, our communications, uh, director in the back. David, can you see these folks as, as soon as they get done? And then we'll make it sure it's on mine, the city.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll, we'll put it out wide and far for you, and, uh, we'll be there. And Bill, would you please make sure it gets on my calendar?
And it's the, it's the Sapphire anniversary.
Sapphire, thank you.
Great.
What's diamond? Is that 50?
50.
All right, Sapphire. Well, we gotta, you know, it's all about marketing. All right.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Oh, Councilmember, hold on, you guys, Councilmember Sephardos. All right, all right. Very good.
I just want to mention that Ann Blevins is in the audience as well, part of the Lions group.
Yeah, they do great work. And they put on the annual car show every year, which we really enjoy. All right. Okay, next is Gary Smith, and then Anna Patrick.
Mr. Mayor, again, I apologize for this. It's just surgeries that are complicating my, uh, words, but, um, the, my problem, again, is back to 28th Avenue. We haven't solved that problem at all. There was a pro- a couple months ago when I was here, and then they did have a police, uh, presence at the top of that hill, which is not where the problem is. The problem is at the bottom of the hill off of 304th. And that, what they do is they come off of, um, the highway, and they get onto, uh, 28th Avenue, which at one time was just a dirt road, uh, going past that Steel Lake where I live on the lake. And, uh, I'm about five houses from 304th, so they turn that corner, either going, uh, east or west, they turn that corner, and here, they look at that hill, and they go, hot darn, I'm going to go for it. And it goes on constantly, trucks, buses, cars, you name it, we got it. And, uh, by the time they hit the bottom of the hill, let me explain that hill. For the persons who aren't familiar with it, if you can visualize north and south, that is where 28th Avenue, uh, is, and it runs north and south, and as I said. And, um, when you get to the bottom of the hill, you're looking at my house, at the fifth house on the right. Now, everybody's going to look at me, you know, what the heck am I doing? Um, and then, um, the, by that time, they've gone, there was five houses from 30, because they turned a corner, remember? Either way, it's a dead end at 28th, there's a dead end at 304th. So they're coming down, going east and west, and they're turning on to 28th, because they want to get on to, uh, 317th. That's the entrance, and it takes them directly to it. No problems. That's a wonderful program, but it took the privacy away. We've had four bad fender vendors right in front of my house this year, or last year, I should say, and, uh, and they were all because of the speed of cars coming forwards and backwards and up and down. They got to go quick. And, um, the, the police were at the top. That's never been a real big problem. I would, I never, I tried to make that, uh, come to fruition, as you would remember that. It's at the bottom, because by the time they hit my house, they're up to 60, 70 miles an hour. The telephone post out there had a monitor of some sort on it, and I assume it was to maybe find, oh, well, I'm out of time. But I only want to know is, what's happening, what didn't happen, why it didn't happen, what do I have to do to convince you that there's a school just six tenths of a mile away?
Right.
That, and that alone would do it. And I have the solution, how, not only can you fix this problem, but you can make a nicer term for the, for the, um, for the, for the city on, uh, police tickets from it.
All right. Thank you, Gary.
I'm sorry to extend it.
Oh, that's okay. Uh, EJ, we've got, uh, the, uh, the phone number, and, uh, I don't think we've got his email address, but actually, I do, at the office, but we've got the phone number here. Would you follow up with Mr. Smith about efforts?
Sure.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Pam has, uh, his email address as well. All right. All right, Anna Patrick.
Evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. I am here to, I studied the information about the ordinance or the licensing. I took a closer look. I think I understand it now. Um, it's complicated. Um, we're talking about the licensing for permanent supportive housing and shelter. And I think you guys have your second hearing tonight, so I'd like to add some comments to that. Uh, looking at it, I, um, made some notes, um, pert- I went back and looked at convalescent centers and adult family homes, and I had learned that, recently I learned that, um, in convalescent centers and adult family homes, sometimes we're serving, um, high-needs individuals that, uh, are impactful on the, uh, community in convalescent centers and adult family homes, and they're increasing the numbers, and there's a lot of money to be made on, um, uh, serving or facilitating, um, services for, um, severe mentally ill individuals. And this can be impactful on the communities. Um, and, uh, so, you know, try not to discriminate against one group or another. I think we, you know, if we could, um, look at legally what we can do to mitigate impacts on surrounding neighborhoods, especially since in, in this case, we don't have limitations on the distance between housing in those types of, um, services. And, um, so I think it would be helpful to look at revisiting, um, adding some, um, I, I feel like there's a loophole here that needs to be addressed, um, for the security program for, um, convalescent centers and in-home care facilities. Um, looking at, I have to get my little 19 dot 115 dot 040, maybe adding some verbiage in there, standards of conduct, taking what's in the 12 dot 35 dot 080, standards of conduct, and maybe adding that in to the others. And I think that would be a reasonable fix if we're able to, and I would ask that you, that you, that your city attorney look at it and find out what we can do to be proactive there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Melissa Hamilton, and then Allison Fine, and then Betty Taylor.
Good evening, Mayor, um, Council, President Kuchmar, uh, Council and Community. My name is Melissa Hamilton, and I'm a Federal Way resident. I wanted to come up here and first thank those members of our city staff, the leadership, including our mayor, police chief, John Hutton, um, and others, for attending our neighborhood's Steel Lake Block Watch. Your presence made a huge difference, and my neighbors are still talking to me about how they really valued the opportunity to hear your thoughts and for them to hear, um, or for you to hear their concerns. So thank you for carving out time in your schedule, uh, to come to that. That was really special. So I'm going to go a little off-script here, but obviously, public safety is something that I'm very passionate about. And, um, I just want to encourage our community that it starts at, it starts at home. It starts at the local level. If you don't know your neighbors, get to know your neighbors, because it makes a huge difference. Um, also- Also, I wanted to thank the Diversity Commission for their work, uh, putting together the MLK Day Community Celebration Event. This past Monday, I got to attend that. What a beautiful tribute, um, to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Every bit of it was just beautiful. I felt the love and the community spirit in that building. It was good to see so many of our city council, uh, members present, our mayor present. The networking time with our nonprofit booths was also just really great. So thank you to our Diversity Commission for that. Um, and then I just want to close out and say, we live in a really great community. I grew up in a really tiny little town called Yelm, and at ti, at times, it feels like I'm back in a little tiny town. So, uh, even though we're a city over 100,000 people. So if we can continue to grow smaller as we grow bigger and not lose that connectivity with our neighbors and with our city leaders, I think we'll be okay Federal Way. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And go tornadoes. All right, Allison Fine.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, first I will speak just as a citizen of Federal Way and just say, um, to all the people who watch and scrutinize the school district very intensely. As a, as a person who's a former teacher and holds a master's, master's degree in education, I hope as much as you spend time, uh, going to those meetings and, uh, having opinions about what the school board is doing, you're also mentoring youth in our community, because there's plenty of opportunities for you all to be part of the change. Um, now I'm gonna speak as a, as a diversity commissioner. Um, thank you for your kind words. Um, and for everyone who has something positive to say about the event yesterday, um, it was definitely a labor of love, um, from, from the people, um, on the commission specifically, that Lisa Trinis and, and Ron. But I will also ask formally that, um, the Diversity Commission gets a little bit more support. Our next, um, our next big event, um, as you guys know, is, uh, the Federal Way Community Festival, formerly known as the Flavor of Federal Way. It is a, uh, an all-day festival essentially on August 10th. We are getting ready to put sponsorship applications, entertainment applications, food truck applications, vendor applications into the community. But Levi Love, as amazing as they are, cannot do the work of event planning. That is not their job. That is not their responsibility. And, uh, and if we want as a city to have a signature event such as that, um, then we need support. I've heard, uh, rumblings that there were council members that asked for, um, for this to be like a multicultural event, which it is already. Um, and I find it interesting that council members will continue to make asks of commission, but not attend any meetings and not fully support us. Um, so, uh, we are going to do the best that we can. I am spearheading this. And anybody who knows me knows that I don't do anything at 50%. But, uh, we really need someone within the city, uh, some, somebody on staff to be our support person, um, to help us get this event to be where it was. There was, uh, probably 1,500, 2,000 people that came in 2019. We, uh, we anticipated it would be equally big, but we, we need the support as a commission. So please, uh, talk amongst yourselves, do whatever you need to do, but find, uh, find some support for us on staff. Because Levi, Levi's, Levi is not able to do all of that work by themselves and shouldn't have to, because that's not in their job description, so. Uh, we want to make this event a yearly event barring another COVID-style situation. But the only way we can do that is if we work together. Uh, we're working with the other commissions. Uh, we're working with Parks and Rec. It's gonna get done, but I, I hope that you guys can support us as a commission, because this is going to be a huge event, and we all want to be proud of it. So please support that. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Allison. And a great job on your introduction of our keynote, uh, last night. And, uh, thank you for your work on the Diversity Commission. Uh, Brian, let's, uh, let's make sure we get some staff report on, uh, staff support, uh, for this event, as I've committed to Commissioner Fine. Okay, Betty Taylor.
Good evening, um, Deputy Mayor, Mayor, City Council, um, citizens. My name is Betty Taylor. I live in Federal Way. Um, let me see. Um, let me see. Um, it's my understanding that, um, well, okay. At my, my apartment complex where I live at, we, well, the management sent out a letter today saying that, uh, the mayor is gonna be coming to my apartment complex on June, wait, well, excuse me, um, January 24th, along with the Chief of Police. And so, okay, so, um, yeah, so it was my understanding that, um, they're gonna come and stuff. So, but I'm, um, me as a resident, um, I, I would like to see the, and, and Tyree City Council come. I, I really would. I would like to see that. I, you know, um, um, I remember when, um, when I lived at, um, Waterbury Park, and we would have meetings there. And we would have, we would invite the, the, the mayor and the Chief of Police. And then we would have Lindsey Sperry, and then we have the City Council come. And so, uh, it was just me, this is just me, just me, uh, this is, this is an ask. Um, something that I would like to see, because there's a lot that, um, a lot of people in my apartment complex do not know about the, the city. They do not know about the City Council. And these are senior citizens, and some of them can't get to a lot of emails. They can't, you know, they either don't have, they have a lot of availability issues. So, um, yeah, so it was just my request. And, um, and also, um, I would also like to, um, ask if we could have the, what we call that, those connection, community meetings that we have throughout the city in times past, if we could bring that back to the city, because, um, it's very important that, um, different things happen in every community and stuff. And so I think that it's good for the, um, community to come together. It's good for residents to come together. It's good for the city, for the council, and to just come together, because we don't have that no more. You know, we don't have that no more, and we need to just bring it back. So that's my ask.
All right, thank you, Betty. Uh, for, uh, council members, that event is next Wednesday, the 24th, at Traditions, uh, directly across the street, uh, from, um, Town Square Park. Also, uh, Chief, we, uh, and to let council know, uh, we are doing a retail safety summit. Uh, Chief, do we have a date on that? It skips my mind right now.
February 21st. It's a Wednesday, and it will start, I believe, at 9:30.
AM?
Yes, sir.
Just checking. All right. Uh, it'll be via Zoom. We want as many people who will show up as possible. All right, thank you. Okay, um, let's see here. Uh, that's all I've got for pink sheets. And we had no one sign up, uh, prior to the, uh, prior to the council meeting online. Uh, so, um, uh, thank you very, everyone for their comments. All right, uh, next we've got presentations, a proclamation for the Korean American Day, um, January 13th. And Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, at this point, I would like to invite the following people to the podium, please. Moon Lee, Shelley Cole, Sandra Inland, Handsome Row, Kami Jo Row. I apologize if I mispronounced your name. I will read this, and then I'll, I'll meet you, um, right there. Whereas on January 13, 1903, 102 Korean immigrants arrived in the United States, marking the beginning of the Korean immigration to America. And whereas 2024 celebrates 121 years of heritage, tradition, contribution, perseverance from our Korean-American community. And whereas Korean Americans are an integral part of Federal Way community and have contributed lately despite harassment, discrimination, all of which are on the rise today. And whereas the city of Federal Way welcomes and supports Korean Americans as vital members of the community. And whereas the city of Federal Way is committed to learning, farm, and engaging with the Korean-American community to remove impediment to success through increasing social inclusion, reducing poverty, access to services and healthcare. And whereas in 1992, the city hosted the first Korean community quarterly meeting, providing translated city updates in an effort to provide meaningful engagement, which has continued for the last 30 years. And whereas in 2000, the city fostered a sister-city relationship with the city of Donghe Korea, which call on both Federal Way and Donghe to enhance mutual understanding through diverse exchanges and, uh, cooperation in such area as social, economic, cultural, and sport. Promote trade expansion through economics exchange. Promote regional development through tech, technical exchange, and maintain a friendly relationship based on the traditional Korean-American friendship. And whereas achievement and contribution of Korean-American can be seen throughout the nation in business, academia, arts, science, engineering, medicine, literature, journalism, government, and the military. Now, therefore, we, under side Mayor and the City Council of City of Federal Way, do hereby proclaim January 13, 2024, as Korean American Day, and do encourage all resident to celebrate the contribution of our Korean-American community side this 16 days of January 2024.
First of all, I would like to thank you, Mayor Jim Farrell, and then Susan, uh, Honda for a council member. Yesterday, Saturday, that was wonderful that you were, you shined our event on that day. Thank you so much. Meanwhile, uh, my name is Sandra England, and this is Shelley Cole, TV station vice president. And this is board member, Chan Mi Cho, and then board member, uh, Moon Jai Lee, and then Han, um, Row, yes, Hansen Row. And we support the Korean American Day celebration as a board member and have learned historical changes, uh, and the day designated as Korean American Day celebration since Governor Chris Cora-Grier, uh, signed in April 9, 2007, which was Washington State with in, engrossed to build 5166, and the sponsor by Senator Paul Shin, and passed the House 94 vote, and the Senate with a 48 vote. Now, even City of Federal Way, Mayor, and council members supporting and recognizing and the Korean American Day are vital, are, Korean Americans are vital, are part of the communities and their culture, and heritage, embracing, uh, and your city, and further make our council, uh, communities and the Washington State vibrant. We appreciate your time and effort for making the Korean American Day celebration differences. I would like to, special thanks to Mayor Jim Farrell and council members for their dedication and effort communicating to the Federal Way citizens, including white newsletter, including proclaiming the proclamation during the, our ceremonies even, for Korean American Day celebration. We could not have a successful event without your support. On behalf of our Korean American Day Celebration Foundation Board and with our community people, I would like to express our sincere thank you from the bottom of our heart. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. May I ask all the council members and board members to take a photos, uh, with, including on that? This is gonna be on the TV station.
Okay. Thank you. Should we go compare or stand up? Okay, all right.
The editor today is gonna take the photos for all of us and send it to all our media. Would you please come out, all, both House members? Mayor?
Yes, on my way.
Mayor in the middle?
All right.
As usual.
All right.
Yes.
Okay, everybody, count to three, this way. One, two, three. Congratulations. I like the newsletter.
Yeah, thank you so much. We have already been featured in the newsletter.
That's right.
And presenting to everyone. Thank you so much. Yes, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, hon. Okay, yeah, take care, hon, take care.
Okay, uh, moving on to item seven, council committee and regional committee reports. We've got Parks, Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety. Councilmember Jack Walsh.
Yes.
Yeah, I just, uh, we met, um, last week, January 9th, a week ago today. Uh, items B through G on the consent agenda, uh, came out of that meeting. Um, our next meeting will be held February 13th, and we look forward to seeing some of you there.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. All right, Land Use Transportation Committee, LUTC, Councilmember Doby.
Yes, our, our next meeting is February 5th, uh, which is a Monday. And, uh, right after the council retreats, so we should have some more interesting things to talk about in land use coming up. And we will be having a carryover discussion about, uh, property that, um, may be considered blighted or, um, not suitable for inhabitants being, uh, in the city coming up in our next land use meeting.
All right, great, thank you. All right, Finance, Economic Development, and Regional Affairs Committee, otherwise known as FedRec. Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the committee did not meet in the month of December. So our next meeting is gonna be on Tuesday, January 23rd, at 5:00 PM in this room.
All right, thank you very much. Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, Councilmember Resipadossen.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we had a meeting last Wednesday, uh, and everyone was in attendance. And, um, our committee bylaws had not been updated since, I believe, um, 1998, I think. So we are now talking about it and trying to update it, and then bring it to council for approval. Um, and also, we received one grant application that we discussed, um, that also will be coming before you. And then we also listened to two past grant recipients about their, um, what they've been doing, their accomplishments, and, um, how they've been utilizing the, the funds that they received. Um, and then, um, the other thing that we're talking about and would like the commu, the, um, um, city's involvement is to apply for, um, TEG grants to fund comprehensive travel and tourism marketing program designed to strategically reach out to target audiences and markets in order to get Federal Way on the map and in their minds of travelers. So that's gonna be our, the next project that we're, we're. So that's going to be our, the next project that we're working on and bringing it to council and the mayor. And that's it.
Great, thank you.
So our next meeting is February, Wednesday, second Wednesday of the month in February. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, the regional committees report, councilmember Honda.
Thank you. The first PIC meeting of 2024 isn't until February fourteenth, on, which is a Wednesday. It's seven to nine P M. It's online, and council can all attend. The agenda isn't released yet, so I will let you all know that as soon as it's out, but don't know yet what's going to be on the agenda. Today, we had our first skateboard meeting of the year. I was elected chair, and councilmember from C-TAC, Peter Kwan, was elected vice chair. And we talked about our goals and things that we wanted to accomplish in 2024. On Thursday, I'm going to be attending a Zoom meeting from the Council of Foreign Affairs. It's, it's for state and local officials, and it's a webinar on the senior population, and it's titled "The Gray Wave Responding to an Aging Population." The state of Maine and the Woodrow Wilson International Center for Scholars will be discussing the demographic trends and issues facing the aging population. I've been attending these seminars or webinars since COVID, when they started offering webinars to city council members, and they're, they're really quite interesting. They last about an hour, and if anyone's interested, I can send you the link where you can get your invitation. But it's people from throughout the country and what they're, what they're working on. And so since we're all kind of getting up to that gray wave, you know, some of us faster than others, it'll be interesting to see what Maine has done, because I know that they've done a lot of work with their senior population. And next week, I will be attending my first meeting of the Women in Government Board for National League of Cities, and I'm still very excited to be on that, that board, and we'll let you know what we talk about. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Council president report.
Thank you. I'm so glad to see that Commander Klingel is still here. It was wonderful to have somebody, Fedroway-owned young man from Lake Grove, Lakota, and Decatur, becoming a combat medic and then joining our police force. I think that's just, really says a lot for our community, and thank you that you decided to come back here and serve. Mayor, I, I like the idea that Betty brought up, Taylor brought up, the town hall meetings. I think that we should reinstitute those, if you're, if you're okay with that, and so maybe we can put that on our agenda. But one thing we do need to discuss is, we're all going to DC, that's where we're going to ask for money for the city. We need to talk about what our legislative agenda and what our ask will be, and so we need to get that moving.
Okay.
And so we probably need to talk to our lobbyists about it.
Right, absolutely. We keep in frequent touch with them, Bill, let's talk about that tomorrow, and, and let's, we'll, we'll reach out to the, we'll reach out to you, council president, tomorrow to talk about that.
It took me, in the past, it took me seven times to go to DC to get seven, twelve million. There was a seed money for our exchange at, it was a hundred and twenty million dollar exchange at the, over by Costco, but we need to finish the other half, but we, we need to get that money, a seed money, so we can go to the legislature and say, you know, hey, pony up.
Right.
Thank you.
I do want to let you know that we had representatives from Senator Murray's office at the community center taking a look. John, you want to talk about that?
Yes, we're very excited. We have members joining us potentially this Friday at the community center from Senator Murray, Senator Cantwell, and also Congressman Adam Smith's office, potentially visiting us on Friday. It's not set in stone yet, but we're excited about that opportunity to meet with them.
About funding. And I do want to, want to let everybody know as well that we did hear from Senator Murray's office when the, when the windstorm hit really hard last week, and there were reports of branches hitting homes and hitting that adult family home, their office called just to make sure everything was okay in Fedroway. Just really impressed. So we'll talk about that agenda.
May I ask John a question? John, I think I saw on Facebook somewhere where there is a public meeting on the locker room situation.
Yes, that's on Thursday evening at five o'clock.
Okay, from five to seven?
Mm-hmm.
Is it an open house, or?
Yes, we, you know, we understand that there, it's a very important project, as you know, and it will involve some disruptions to the public, so we want to make sure that they have plenty of notice and know what our plans are to mitigate disruptions, to make their visit every time as positive as can be during the construction phase.
So will you have the plans there?
Yes, and we'll have Rock Project Management there with us. They can answer questions, show them around, do what, answer any questions. You know, we have a very passionate membership that's getting larger and larger every day, and it's a very, very important piece of our community, and we just want to make sure that we're informing them the best we can in getting their support, their continued support. They've been fabulous, and, and know that we're going to make this, this locker room situation a thing of the past, the past situation, and they've been great.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, all right, now on to consent agenda. These items have gone through committee, could be passed all at once. I'll read them and ask if a councilmember wants an item pulled for separate consideration. Item A, the minutes for the January two, twenty, twenty twenty-four regular special meeting minutes. Item B, Global Kitchen Doing Business as Kay Catering Amendment Two, amended term services and compensation for Dumas Space Center. C, Axon Contract Amendment Number One. D, Arts Commission 2024 Contract for Services Funding Recommendations. E, Arts Commission 2024 Work Plan. F, 2024 to 2026 Parks and Recreation Program Guide. G, Community Center Pool Chemical Contract Amendment. H, twenty, twenty-three to twenty-five Commute Trip Reduction CTR Program Implementation Agreement with the city of C-TAC. I, Twenty-First Avenue South at South Three Twentieth Street Signal and Pedestrian Improvements Project Award. And J, Military Road South Preservation Project Bid Award. Counsel, are there any items you wouldn't want pulled for separate consideration? All right, council president, Coach Mark.
Thank you, Mayor. I move approval of the consented gen items A through J.
I second.
It's been moved at second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matters passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Item nine, council business. Item A, council confirmation of committee chair appointments. Councilmember Walsh.
I move approval of the council committee appointments as presented.
Ah, so we should have, why don't we, council president?
Sure.
Yeah.
So the, these are the council committee, the chair and the committee members for 2024. Finance Economic Development and Regional Affairs Committee, Fedrec, Hong Tran remains chair, Jack Doby a member, Paul McDaniel a member, and Steve Grum from Finance will be staffed. Land Use will be chair is Jack Doby, Jack Walsh is a member, Hong Tran is a member, and E.J. Walsh is part of staff for that. By the way, all of these meetings are on Zoom. Parks, Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety Chair is Jack Walsh, Susan Honda a member, Lydia Asef Adosan a member, and John Hutton with Parks Department is a member of this. And Lodging Tax Advisory Committee will remain with Lydia Asef Adosan as chair, and Tonya Carter as Economic Development will be staff for that committee. And I want to do also mention that we have other assignments regionally that will remain the same, such as Lydia and Susan will remain on the Public Issues Committee with suburban, with the, used to be called Suburban Cities, always get mixed up what they're called now. And, thank you. And National League of Cities, again, will remain with Susan, and Susan is on the Board of Health and the, no, not on the Board of Health.
I aged out.
You.
I served nine years. I, I age out this year.
Okay, thank you. So, so basically, that's where we're at, and that's what we're voting on.
All right, so there's been a motion?
All right, sorry about getting ahead of myself there, so the motion is on the floor?
I'll second it.
So there's, there's been a motion and a second to ratify the committee selections and appointments as set forth by the council president. Is there any discussion?
The only thing I want to mention is that when we do have a committee, commission interviews, I want to just make sure that we have the, a staff member who, who's, or somebody from staff who's assigned to that commission would be also sitting with us on the diet for doing the interviews. I think that would be valuable insight for us, so just wanted to mention that.
Right, yeah, all right, we'll take care of that. Thank you very much, I think it's eminently reasonable. Okay, all right, there's any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed?
Present.
Okay, Stephanie, do you have that?
I do.
All right, okay, so it's six, zero, one. All right, very good. Okay, item B, resolution amending, council rules of procedure to eliminate the position of deputy mayor. Ryan Call will make the presentation.
Good evening, mayor and council. My presentation is basically the title of this item. I, as directed at the last council meeting, I have come back with a resolution, resolution prepared that does one thing, which is to revert the rules back to the previous version, basically, that only had council president and did not have the position of deputy mayor. So it was a pretty straightforward substitution. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Counsel, any questions? Thanks, Ryan, stay, stay close. All right, council president, Coach Mark.
I move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Been a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Present.
Opposed?
Present.
All right, and do you have that? So six in favor, one present.
I do.
All right, and no opposed. Thank you very much. All right. Item ten, ordinances, first reading, Council Bill eight seventy-four, authorizing condemnation of certain properties for the purpose of constructing the Joint Use Operations Maintenance Facility. First of all, a presentation from Desiree Winkler, Deputy Public Works Director, and my understanding was there's an update about this, but Desiree, you want to give that update during the course or before we get started?
Trying to find my presentation, first of all. I could do it during the course of the presentation.
All right.
I have a really good spot for that, so.
All right, sounds good.
You gonna come help me, Thomas? It's on the desktop.
Thomas, where's the cape? Seriously.
I was just gonna ask.
We put it in the budget, you know, you're, you need to wear this thing.
Touche.
Just kidding.
It's hanging up in his office.
That's right.
It is in my office, that is true.
Okay, now I can share.
There is no cape, by the way, we're just kidding.
No, there is.
Oh, there is.
Oh, there is.
We gave him one, we gave him one last year.
I always, I always thought that this was a metaphorical cape. All right, after the meeting, I want to see this thing. All right, Desiree.
All right, good evening, mayor, council president, members of council. I'm Desiree Winkler, Deputy Public Works Director, presenting the final action for our joint operation maintenance facility to pursue condemnation if necessary. Okay, hold on. There we go. Policy question. Should city council enact an ordinance authorizing property acquisition through condemnation for the joint operations and maintenance facility project? So some background information, between May twenty-first, March twenty-two-three, we identified the public need to develop a joint operation and maintenance facility in order to provide effective operation and maintenance for the city's public infrastructure. Includes facilities, parks, streets, surface waters, and storm drain systems. On March twenty-twenty-third, council made final site selection of Site One, expanding existing facility to the north that is located on Twenty-Eighth Avenue South on the east side between South Three Twelfth and Three O Eighth Lane. As part of that action, staff was authorized to pursue purchasing the properties. From June twenty-twenty-three to present, appraisals and review appraisals were completed. Offers and relocation packages were presented to all property owners. There are twelve properties, and there's a map on the next slide, which is a little easier to talk on, so I'll go there. Five are under city ownership, we've completed the sales. And as of tonight, at six twenty, actually, we have seven under, the remaining seven under signed purchase and sale agreements. The pink ones in the middle, those were the ones before tonight that had not signed their purchase and sale agreements. So time is of the essence to get all these properties under possession and use. The, the current schedule is to be completed with design by the spring, get out for advertisement and award, to be able to start construction this summer. The longer we wait, the more prices will rise, and so it's imperative that we keep moving forward to timely secure these properties. As far as actions and, and next steps, so all the properties that have not closed, so that would be the seven, as of today, are part of this final action, and all those parcels are listed in the back of the ordinance as a Z A. So all the property owners were notified via certified mail, the legal notices were published in the Fedroway Mirror. We are continuing to communicate with all the property owners to reach a negotiated settlement. And then what I'm asking you today is still to enact an ordinance to move through condemnation action if needed. So the options for you tonight are to adopt the proposed ordinance, or to do not propose, do not adopt the proposed ordinance and provide direction to staff, and the mayor recommends option one, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, council, any questions? All right, thank you. Do we have any public comment? Stephanie?
No, mayor, I don't have anyone signed up.
All right. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill eight seventy-four, authorizing condemnation of certain property for the purpose of constructing the Joint Use Operations and Maintenance Facility. An ordinance of the city of Fedroway, Washington, providing for the acquisition of certain property for the purpose of constructing the Joint Use Operations and Maintenance Facility along Twenty-Eighth Avenue South from South Three Twelfth Street to South Three O Eighth Lane, including three properties along the south side of Three O Eighth Lane, describing the public use and necessity of such property, directing staff to exhaust reasonable negotiation efforts to purchase such property, providing for the condemnation of the property, and directing the city attorney to initiate all necessary actions and proceedings in the manner provided by law for said condemnation if attempts to purchase are not successful.
All right, councilmember Doby.
Yeah, I moved a forward the proposed ordinance to the February sixth, twenty twenty-four council meeting for second reading and enactment.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passed unanimously, thank you very much. Desiree? All right, second reading and enactment, item B, Council Bill eight seventy-two, ordinance, adoption of state mandated building and construction codes. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill eight seventy-two, ordinance, adoption of state mandated building and construction codes. An ordinance of the city of Fedroway, Washington, relating to the adoption of the twenty-twenty-one Washington State Building Code and related matters, amending Federway Revised Code thirteen one six zero two zero, thirteen one six zero three zero, thirteen two zero zero five zero, thirteen two zero zero nine zero, thirteen two two zero two zero, thirteen two two zero three zero, thirteen two six zero two zero, thirteen two six zero three zero, thirteen two eight zero two zero, thirteen two eight zero three zero, thirteen three one zero two zero, thirteen three one zero three zero, thirteen three four zero two zero, thirteen three four zero three zero, thirteen three eight zero two zero, thirteen four one zero two zero, thirteen four three zero two zero, thirteen four three zero three zero, and adding chapter thirteen four seven Federway Revised Code, including sections thirteen four seven zero one zero, thirteen four seven zero two zero, and thirteen four seven zero three zero.
Good job.
Great job, thank you. All right, councilmember Doby.
Yeah, I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, councilmember Asef Adosan.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that what Anna Patrick said during public comment?
Okay.
It's the next one?
That's the next one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it is, it is. I apologize.
All right, no, that's fine, that's fine. Okay, is there a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passed unanimously, thank you. Now, item C, this, this is the one, Lydia. All right, just kidding. Council Bill eight seventy-three, ordinance licensing permanent supportive housing and transitional housing and emergency housing and shelter. All right, would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill eight seventy-three, ordinance licensing permanent supportive housing and transitional housing and emergency housing and shelter. An ordinance of the city of Fedroway, Washington, relating to licensing of permanent supportive housing and transitional housing and emergency housing, housing and shelter, amending Federway Revised Code twelve thirty-five zero seven zero and twelve thirty-five zero eight zero.
All right, council, let's start with the motion, and then let's go with your question. Councilmember Doby.
I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been a motion and a second, councilmember Asef Adosan.
Yeah, my question- Yeah, my question is, first of all, I'm sorry, I wasn't sure if Anna said 19 dot 115 dot 010?
Well, we've got legal counsel. Yeah.
But anyway, I think it's valid that we look at the, what was it? That the rules and regulations be followed, right? So if it's not there, I would just suggest that we add it.
Okay. Thank you. Legal counsel, Ryan, can you advise?
So I'm not sure I caught all of what she said at public comment, the impact of all of it. If I understood it correctly, it was that we should apply similar rules that we're going to apply to regulating this type of housing, permanent supportive housing, for other things as well that are not currently required, such as old folks homes and facilities that support mental health and things like that. So whether or not that's good policy, I don't think that's something that has been studied. I think that it would be premature to just throw it in at this point. I think it should, at best, we should probably have staff look into that. So this was, these are specific things that council has asked us to regulate that's currently before you specifically. So if these other items should be regulated as well, I think that staff should come back with a separate ordinance.
All right. Let's go to Keith, our director here. Let's, do you understand what's being recommended and how does that jive with where we're at right now?
Sure. So just to remind the council, the ordinance that's in front of you for second reading was really just to provide some clarification for facilities like the day center that technically don't have residents that have guests. And what this language amendment does is take the operating requirements and make it clear for facilities that don't have residents. That's all this is doing. What we heard during public comment is a desire from a citizen that we extend operating requirements to other type of housing facilities like convalescent homes. And that is, that is not something that we've thought about, that's not something that we've done, we don't know if any of our peer cities are doing that. That's a work plan item that's clearly not on anybody's agenda at the moment. Obviously, if that's something that the council feels is a priority, then the conversation we need to have is what then comes off our current work plan. So that's a conversation we can have. Maybe we have it at L U T C if that's something the council has a passion for, but I'm not sure that I've ever heard any conversation about doing something like that. And how many facilities are potentially going to come under that new licensing provision? We don't understand any of the ramifications of that suggestion.
Real quickly, Ms. Patrick, did you want to address the council real quickly?
But it makes sense what you're reading.
Just in regard to, you heard, did you hear what Keith had to say in legal counsel? Okay. I want to make sure, you know, we've added public comment to our ordinance process to make sure that we fully understand. Could you, I wanted to give you an opportunity to weigh in here.
Thank you. Yeah. First of all, I think this ordinance that you're talking about tonight, I don't have any issues with it that I want to comment to, I just wanted to kind of springboard off of it.
Okay.
And apply it maybe, consider applying it to some of these other types of facilities. I had learned recently that there's kind of a new trend, and so, yeah, we talk about new policy that we're considering, well, there's new trends and I think we want to get ahead of it. And the reason why I brought it up is that there's a need to find housing for severe mentally ill with a lack of other options right now. And so there's offers to in-home care, convalescent center facilities, large sums of money to take in specific needs, and if you take in those specific needs, there's more money being offered. And most people would say, well, you know, I don't want that to impact my other pay, my other clients. But sometimes, you know, when you consider how hard it is to serve the other clients, you know, they're adding more, I think legislating for more clients. But, you know, when you consider if somebody's really struggling after COVID especially, you know, you might take up that opportunity and not knowing what you're getting into. And it can be, I would imagine, if you're, you know, big money to be made and, you know, large sums, if you take in, the more you take in, the better. Some people might not necessarily care how it affects the neighbors. And I think we need to be proactive, and so I would like our city to look at that, trying to find a way to make it fair to those who are already, we have a lot of those existing in our community already. We don't know how many, but we should try to get ahead of it with maybe tying that into the licensing that's already there. So that's, does that clarify?
I got it now.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you so much. Okay. So we'll keep that in mind moving forward. Keith, let's talk about that next opportunity we get. Let's add it to our one-on-one. Okay. And Brian, let's make sure you're part of that discussion.
Mayor, I was really focusing on the standards of conduct.
Yep.
And I think it'd be good to review just to make sure that they're uniform and the standards of conduct are followed. That's all.
Do we have these, as it relates to these standards of conduct with regard to these non-resident locations like the day center, are that, is the code of conduct included in that or not?
So the code of conduct in the ordinance that's in front of the council does include and clarifies that it applies to the day center.
Very good. Okay. All right. Does that, oh, and actually, Counselor McDaniel, did you have a question?
My only question was if she could email us her data that she's talking about so I could get a better understanding kind of what's going on.
Ms. Patrick?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I totally okay with what we have tonight, but I'm curious to see what she was talking about, just to get a little more time to look at it.
Very good. Ms. Patrick, could you email myself and the council that information?
I'll give you a minute.
All right. Thank you very much.
That's it.
Okay. Thank you. All right. There's been a motion and a second and a good discussion and additional public comment. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Matter of passing unanimously. Thank you very much. Counsel reports, it's the, it's the second meeting of the month, so we'll start at the other end of the dais. Counselmember Doby?
Yeah, I just have one report. Many people may have known Walt Schroeder, Rotarian, president of the Rotary for many years, have been in Federway, I don't know, longer than I lived here probably. But he passed away, and his funeral is Thursday, this Thursday at 11 o'clock at St. John's Catholic Church at 11 a.m. So I just wanted to let everybody know, I've had breakfast with the fellow for the last 12 years, every Friday at biscuits, or that was the next one. But anyway, he's a great loss to our community. I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Counselor Walsh?
I would like to commend the Diversity Commission and the staff involved with the MLK celebration yesterday. It was outstanding. I think that one of the important things about an MLK celebration, it should be bringing people together, and I think it did a very good job of that. So my, my, you know, thank you. Thank you very much for putting that together well. And that's it for me.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Trent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of public service announcement. I don't know if the community is aware, but DSHS now has the mobile community service office. What it is, is we have this mid-sized truck that go into different city, different area to provide service to resident of that location. So instead of, for example, people don't have to come to my office on 348, they can just go to, oops, sorry, the library, for example, or multi-service center on the date that the mobile truck is here to conduct their business here. Most likely, they will receive faster service than come to my office because less people will go to the mobile site. They provide identical service to my office. For example, they can provide basic food application, Medicare saving program, disability medical assistance, and many other services that the regular DSHS office can offer. The next time they here is going to be on January 18, which is Thursday, from 12:30 p.m. to 4:30 p.m. at the Federway Library on the First Avenue. And then on January 29, from 10 to 2 p.m., they will be at multi-service center. And then again, on February 1, they will be at the library, again, from 12:30 to 4:30. And I will update the council and the community when we receive more information regarding when they will be here next. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Counselor Honda?
Thank you. So I attended the Korean-American celebration. It was in Burien at High Line Performing Arts Center, which was the very first event I attended as a council member years ago with Mayor Skip Priest at the same location. So, yeah, I thought that was kind of interesting to go back there. They do move around. Hopefully, they'll come back to Federway sooner than later. I'd like to congratulate new Eagle Scout Stuart Belvin. He received his Eagle Award Saturday evening. He's from Troop 398, and he's now away at college, but congratulations to him and his parents because as a parent of an Eagle Scout, I know that the whole family gets involved in the project and it can take a while. So congratulations. There is a 30-minute video on TVW called Pursuits, and it is pro and con of pursuits in Washington State. And it's very, I watched it. It's really interesting to watch. You get different perspectives from different people, and I would just recommend watching it. Just go to TVW online and you'll find it. And, you know, mayor, you and I have talked about this before for quite a while, but I really think as city our size, even a part-time event planner could be helpful. You know, the Senior Commission does an event, the Diversity Commission, the Arts Commission, Parks does events all the time, you know, it would just be something that perhaps could even save us money on getting like chairs and tables and all the things that you have to get when you do an event. So anyway, maybe with, since this is a budget year, maybe we could add that as, start out part-time and see how that works.
All right. Thank you. Brian, do we have something like that already?
We do. We do have a part-time event planner on staff that can help.
Well, are they helping commissions?
They are helping with activities that commissions support, not commission staffing.
Right.
Okay. Because I-
It's an event planner. It's not a commission.
I understand that, but the events that commissions put on, such as the Senior Health Fair, or the one that the Diversity Commission will be putting on in the summer, last time that was held, we actually did pay someone to help out Jerry Lynn because it was so much work.
Yeah.
So I would just, I would just really support that. I think that Allison was absolutely correct. Thank you.
In fact, it's somebody that used to be on our staff. What's her name again?
Melinda Blevins actually has left the city.
Right.
And so we are advertising, but that person has typically supported Parks events.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Well, we'll take a look at that. Thank you very much. Okay. Counsel President?
Thank you.
You missed it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
It doesn't matter anymore.
Sorry. Sorry, you guys.
I'll keep it brief then.
All right. No, no, no. Take as long as you want. Counselor McDaniel?
No, my big thing was the MLK event. I really enjoyed it. I thought the singing was great, and it was a very well put-on event, so I really enjoyed it. That's all I have, though.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Counselmember Acevedo?
Okay. I just, I just thought of a public service announcement also. Seattle Housing Authority is opening their Section 8 voucher program tomorrow, the 17th, to all who qualify, so anybody under 50% AMI qualifies. However, priority is given to people experiencing homelessness and people who are under 30% AMI, and they're going to review applications continuously. So I think that there's people here in our city who are either experiencing homelessness or meet the income threshold, I think we can encourage them to go ahead and apply online with Seattle Housing Authority. And then yesterday, I also enjoyed the MLK event. However, I had to go to Olympia, but I did not sign up correctly, so I did not get to testify, but it was around financial literacy for schools to make that a requirement for graduation. And as we, as a city, embark on financial literacy for our citizens, I think, or residents, I think it's very important to also start young and get them educated in financial literacy. But like I said, I did go to Olympia, but didn't get to speak, so, but it's okay. I think that's very important.
Send an email.
I did.
Okay.
And I think, yeah, I did send an email. And then the last thing I wanted to say was just thank you, Susan, and I'm glad, you know, congratulations on the award, and thank you for what you've done as council president and deputy mayor. And I do hope and believe that you'll continue in what you've been doing. And personally, I always enjoy traveling with Susan. That's when we get to really connect, talk, and update each other, I think, on life and family outside of what happens at city council. So I do look forward to those moments, but thank you for everything.
All right. Thank you. All right. Counsel President?
So thank you for trying to testify. That's really important. Yeah. Thank you. So I'm happy to see we have four new police officers. So what does that, what number is that now for us total?
Well, it's a moving target with all kinds of retirements. Chief, what's the, where are we at?
We had quite a few retirements at the end of last year. So we are, I think we're at 11 today, but we have several in the pipeline, so I'm very optimistic. We did fill all our civilian positions. We'll have all our civilian positions filled at the end of the month, so we'll have zero. So that's certainly moving in the right direction, but I really believe first quarter of this year, we should be getting close to a single-digit fill in all the positions.
Okay.